And when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. Candidates are invited to share their qualifications and experience and to talk about their plans and proposals. Candidates are asked to focus on topics relevant to the stated question and to avoid personal attacks and raising issues that are unrelated to the office being sought. If they go outside these guidelines, I may stop them to remind them of these guidelines. Audience members, please turn off your cell phones. We request that you treat all candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after their closing statements, you may clap for all candidates if you wish. We received questions by email prior to tonight's forum. We are also taking questions from our in-person audience. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided paper. Questions must be answerable by all candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for their particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another paper or to have your question collected. Please make sure your questions are written legibly. All questions are reviewed by a league panel. The panel removes any questions that cannot be answered by all candidates or are statements rather than questions, or are duplicates of other questions. We will use as many questions as time allows, striving to cover a variety of topics. We'll now begin our opening statements. Lenny, you may speak first. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the League for hosting this forum and for allowing me the opportunity to participate. I've been your county commissioner since 1998. I have a master's degree in public administration from Ohio University, which I achieved 25 years after getting my undergraduate degree in communications. My career includes 20 years in broadcasting, including 10 years as a station owner. I'm the past president of the National Association of Counties and the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. I continue to serve on both of those boards at this time. I helped found the County Employees Benefit Consortium of Ohio, known as SEPCO, which is an organization that has grown to 44 counties since it was founded, delivering health care coverage to county employees. Since Athens County has joined SEPCO, we've saved over $10,000,000 delivering our health care coverage to our employees. I'm the chair of the Athens County Economic Development Council and the Appalachian Development Corporation. I serve as the vice chair of the Buckeye Hills Regional Council and a member of the Board of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, or ORCA, which is the developer and the operator of the Bailey's Trail System. Being a member of these various boards allows me to, at both the state and national level, allows me to have input in legislation that affects Athens County. During my tenure, I've worked to improve the physical plan of our county buildings and our energy efficiency in those buildings, while keeping a close eye on our county finances. This is something I plan to do over the next four years. I've been endorsed by the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund, Ask Me Council Aid of the AFL-CIO, the Athens County Democratic Party, and the Southeastern Ohio Central Labor Council. I've served as president of the board for the last 10 years and sit on the Athens-Hawking-Solidways District Policy Council.
Thanks, Lenny. Next, we'll hear from Alex.
Hi, I'm Alex Burcher. I'm running as the Republican candidate for Athens County Commissioner. I just have a high school diploma. I graduated Nelsonville, York, and Tri-County in 2015. I've been a member of the Hawking Valley Scenic Railway for the last two years, and also a member of the American Business Professionals of America since I was in junior high. Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from Bill Hayes.
Okay. I'm going to take a slightly different tack and try to tie my experience and education with what I want to do as county commissioners here. As one of the most active volunteers on the Bailey's Trail, I obviously support ecotourism. As a local outdoorsman and entrepreneur, I, my focus will be on drawing a more diverse range of tourists here and helping more of our residents, maybe even you, profit, profit from them coming here. My education in biology, my experience at the Edison Institute, and as a financial advisor will facilitate bringing more bioscience businesses to Athens County, and I know how to get the government to pay for the first one. My experience at OU, OSU, and OARDC position me to convince the state of Ohio to build a demonstration aquaculture facility here. Trust me, folks, this will position our farmers to replace the rapidly failing produce production of Southern California. It's a huge problem. The country's got to deal with it. We may as well raise all that stuff here. MREs are the shelf-stable pouches of food used by the military, FEMA, and outdoors enthusiasts all over the world. With AcesNet's support and this project's already underway, we'll bring a retort pouch canning facility here. This will open global markets for all of our food businesses, and this is a solid investment, and the federal government will also have an interest in that. As a financial advisor, I learned how to find the right people, contact them, and close the deal. That's how I made Million Dollar Roundtable. I'm going to bring the OU alum from all over the country back to Athens as distance workers. A lot of them want to come back here, and after COVID, we all know that they can work here as distance workers. In fact, I know several distance workers here already. Lastly, I possess basic budgeting skills, and I'm going to work hard to make sure that the next time we get a big pot of money from the federal government, that we're not trying to redress projects that should have been addressed in the prior 20 years. Thank you.
Now, we'll move to the question-and-answer portion of the forum. Candidates will have 1 and 1/2 minutes to answer each question. Candidates, should you need a question repeated, please ask, and I'll be happy to do so. We'll begin with questions from our media representatives. First, Caitlin Thorne from WOEB.
Athens County has a large number of renters. Those within the city limits have the protections from the municipalities that they live in, but those who live out in the county do not enjoy such protections. If someone, if it gets to a point where someone needs to step in for those renters, it's often to the point where the building that they are living needs to be condemned. So, what can the county commissioners do to compel landlords to maintain properties for tenants?
And that would be a first question to Alex.
First of all, as a renter myself, I'll back the renters if elected. I think it's time that we do sit down and have more conversations about some of the disadvantages people go through when they rent homes. And I think that that conversation is going to start with elected officials sitting down with the renter on this side and the rentee on that side, and just trying to, you know, bring that, bring that closure in and sit down and have that conversation. That's what I'm about, is having conversations, because if I can't have a conversation with someone who's having an issue, then I don't know about it. Thank you.
And Bill?
Unfortunately, the government at every level has a difficult time stepping in between people and private business. That's just the reality of our country. The biggest thing that I think we can do to improve the situation, it's a horrible situation. I was just up in Gloucester last night, okay? We need to bring more jobs to this county. We need to bring jobs that actually pay living wages. If we increase the economic activity in this county, we'll have greater tax receipts, and then we can look at doing a lot more than what we're able to do right now. At the moment, we simply don't have the resources to address this and a great many other issues.
One thing that can be done is we operate a fair housing program, so complaints can be made to that program, and we can look into those and try to get those addressed that way. The other thing that's taking place right now is we've been having some preliminary discussions as a Board of Commissioners with some of the mayors in the villages to talk about building codes and offering building code services, and what that would look like and what the villages might want to get out of that. Clearly, that's one of the ways you can address the housing issue and substandard housing that renters face, but there's nothing that you could do to go in and say, "We're going to be able to force that to happen." That's going to have to be a work in progress, where you talk to each other, connect with each other, and try to get it to move in a cooperative manner.
The next question is from Nicole Layton from the Athens Messenger, and it will be for Bill first.
If elected, what will be your top three priorities while in office?
Did you say my top priority?
Top three.
Top three? Okay.
You may not have time for three, but...
Okay. Look, one, we need to bring more business to this county, and that's both homegrown business and other businesses that we can attract to the county. That's the first priority. We've got to raise the mean family income in this county. That is my absolute top 100% priority, and I'd like to say it's my first three. But going before, on, from that, we need to protect the people that already live in this county. We can't allow this county to be gentrified to the extent that we're driving all the permanent residents that make Athens County what Athens County is and what, you know, attracts people to come here. We can't drive them out of the county, and we're already doing that to a great extent. And the last thing, we have to preserve our environment. That's the thing that is bringing a lot of people to this county. We've got a train, an ancient steam train up in Nelsonville that brings a lot of people to this county. We've got trails all over the county that bring people here. We've got hunting opportunities that bring people from all over the world here, actually. We have to protect that in order to maintain our attractiveness. And I'll turn it over to Lenny.
My first priority is to finish the projects that we've started that are underway that include the sewer project out the Route 50 corridor, broadband project on the village of Amesville and outside the Amesville area, jobs, of course, with the post and spec building that we just broke ground on, the second spec building, which we have the first one that we broke ground on when I first became commissioner, and now we're doing our second building there. So those are the top three, they're important things that I'd be doing.
I'm going to have to agree with Bill, with Bill on a lot of what he said. I agree that we have to take precautions to make sure that the permanent citizens aren't pushed out, but I strongly, I strongly believe that tourism and infrastructure and jobs would probably, you know, have to be my first three crucial points as commissioner. Things that I believe as, I believe as commissioner should be tackled within the first year of your term. I agree with the fact that we should work on and finish projects that we currently have, but after be, after working on, for so long on some of those projects, I think to prioritize some of those would also come in handy. Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of writers here from The New Political who are right now just observing and may ask a question towards the end of the public questions section. So that's why they're not going now, but possibly later. So the first question from the audience is, "Why do you want to serve as Athens County Commissioner?" And first will be Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
Well, I've been doing it for 24 years. Want to continue to do it because I enjoy making my community a better place to live, work, and play. When I was in private business, I was president of the Chamber of Commerce and found out that whenever we tried to do something to improve the community, the first question that was asked was, "What are the commissioners going to support? What do the commissioners believe in? What do they want to do?" So I figured I should get a seat at the table. That's what motivated me to run in the first place, was to find a way to continue to make Athens County better.
So, the reason why I wanted to run is pretty simple, and that's for the people. My 25 years of life, I've learned in a span of that, that the person who gets up and goes to work every day, whether that be in this county or an hour away, or the farmer, or just the working person, it never seems like that person has a say at the table. Growing up, I never had a say in anything that went in on my school or my community, and now I'm finally at a place to where I can sit and have a say. So that was my motivation, my motivation for running is, I come from the people, I'm for the people and by the people.
I love Athens County. I've been all over the entire country. Hell, I've been to Burning Man seven times. This is the most beautiful place in America I've ever been with respect to living on a day-to-day basis. However, we have serious long-term issues. We've been at the bottom of the economic ladder in the state of Ohio for as long as I can remember, and there's no reason for it. We're resource-rich. We have people here who desperately want jobs. We need to do a better job of supporting the people in the outlying counties. I was at Gloucester last night. I hear this everywhere, Coolville, I hear it in Nelsonville. They look at Athens County like you would look at the movie Hunger Games. We've got the capital city here where all of us are doing well, and the rest of the county's falling off the table. And that's the reason why I'm running. I want to change that.
Thank you. The next question is, "Athens County has heavily relied on Ohio University to drive the county economy. What do you think is Athens County's best chance at diversifying the economy beyond just Ohio University?" And that is for Alex, Bill, and Lenny.
Well, we're never going to be able to give up or push away the university, so we're always going to have to have that relationship. And of course, I'm prepared to work on that relationship and make it stronger. But aside from that, I believe that Athens County is very beautiful. The lands, the trees, the water, everything about Athens County is beautiful, and we should be banking on that. We should be figuring out ways to bring tourism in that serves all the people and not just one group. And Athens County has the land and the welcoming of that. So that's what I would, I would strongly work on, is just exploring ways that everyone can work together, and we're not just, you know, singling people out. Thank you.
I spent a lot of time at Ohio University. Let's see, bachelor's, zoopharm med there with honors, all the coursework for a PhD in molecular and cellular biology, special projects director and scientific liaison at the Edison Institute. I oversaw a lot of the work on rehabbing the Conica Research Labs. We have to use every single resource we have in this county, including Ohio University. And I think we're really missing the boat by not leveraging some of the work that does come out of there and by not providing opportunities for a lot of the people to graduate from there. And I want to work hard to change that. But beyond the university, we have opportunities, a plethora of opportunities to diversify our economy, and we have to do that. We can't put all of our eggs in one basket. Every time OU's had a layoff in the last 20 years, that has been a major shot to the economy of the entire county. We have to diversify our base so that we are not tied into just one provider of income. We've got to get past this company-town mentality. We've been here too long.
One of the first ways to diversify is increase the recreation economy. That's the future for us, taking advantage of our natural resources and taking advantage of what we have here. One of the places we invested in, Guysville, we invested in input for the Hawking River. One of the things we're working on is trying to make that a water trail. So, you know, we have a bike path, we have the mountain bike trails. Now, if we get a water trail, it's one more thing to bring people in to the county to spend their money and spend their time, and maybe relocate, do their job here, have recreational opportunities. The next thing we have to keep working on is improving broadband in the area outside the center city, outside of Athens. If you get outside of Athens, broadband is really iffy at times, and so we've got to provide better service out there and find the willing providers that can work with us to do that, since we're not allowed to operate one on our own as a government, but we have to work with the people out there. The next area that we need to do is talk about affordable housing around the county and senior housing. One of the things that's going to, you'll hear about in the future here in the next six months or so, is the potential for a community development authority, which is going to be a partnership between the university, the city, and the county, to come up with a new community development strategy where we're focused on the ridges for economic development and for housing, and taking advantage of the areas that are going to be developed up there in ways to provide more opportunities in Athens County.
Thank you. Please discuss the impact that the new sewer system will have on the county's economy. And this will be Bill, then Lenny, then Alex.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your question again.
Oh, please discuss the impact that the new sewer system will have on the county's economy.
Well, it's going to have a pretty serious impact on some of the people that live in that area. Quite frankly, that project, I think the EPA started talking to us about that, what was it, 29 or 30 years ago? A lot has changed in that time. I've just read a couple of books on, of all things, sewage and sewage treatment globally. There's a lot of new technology out there. We're going to end up doing, the contracts are cut, the work's underway, we're going to do this system the way it is. In the future, going forward, there are much more cost-effective methods to address that issue. If you look at the impact of Hurricane Sandy, or Superstorm Sandy, by the time it got to New York, when it blew through, there was one leg of the old system that served 100,000 people, and it was down for 30 days with all that sewage, raw sewage going into the Hudson River. But they had built small diversified sewage treatment plants all over the area around that, much less expensive, much less expensive to operate, and much more resilient. Every one of those was back up and operating within 24 hours. We need to take a look at more modern technology the next time we do a project like that.
Lenny, next.
The impact, obviously, when you have a sewer is monumental the first time till you just do it. One of the things that people don't understand is the amount of upkeep a septic system really has, and when you're not doing it, you don't, aren't faced with that cost. But when you look at the affordability of it, it's going to be a little bit at the higher end to start off, but it's going to help people's property values as far as resale goes, when you don't have the smell that you have in a lot of places from failing systems there. The other thing is with the capacity that's built in the system, it'll allow for some growth in other home sites and businesses in that area, so it'll allow a chance for some more commercial development there, just past the city. And then as you look to the future and development in Athens County, the best land out of the flood plain with access to rail and highway is actually around the Route 50 corridor. So that's going to provide the basis for some future economic development growth in that area, and this is the first step towards that. So when you look at the future, it's a chance to build and grow as Athens County spreads out away from the river and away from flood-prone areas.
So I actually agree with the sewer system. I've looked into it quite a bit. This whole entire county probably needs a sewer update, so that's something that I would definitely continue also if I'm elected commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, next, it's, "Do you think the commissioners can address global warming and plastic pollution? How? Appropriations, guidelines, and what else?" And this will be Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
One of the ways we're addressing it is working to reduce our own emissions at the county level. When we built our new EMS station for the city of Athens, we built that as a net-zero building, net-energy-zero building. So we got the first report after its first year of operation and found out, we put about 12% more into the grid than we took out of the grid for operations. So we achieved our goal plus some. We're doing a new 911 building out in the plains, and we're working to make that as green as possible. So as we do our own remodeling and building and updating our systems, that are heating and air conditioning, we try to reduce our consumption. There's been some discussion about, you know, what kind of places we can go in the future, and looking at ways to do carbon sequestration, maybe provide incentives for people to put more trees in. So those kind of things are under discussion, but we have no concrete plans at this point. But we continue to do the things we can do to work towards that progress and continue to change that. It's going to take a concerted effort by everyone, but not just the county, but everyone should think about that. We're also looking at putting in electric vehicle charging stations at our new facility and some other places around, and to take advantage of that. We bought one, our new county vehicle is a hybrid vehicle, which is a big step for us, so that as you look at that, we've talked to the sheriff about maybe using electric cruisers, so another thing under evaluation.
So I would actually continue the current policy that the county has in place right now when it comes to emissions with the vehicles, and trying to lessen our carbon footprint from the county standpoint, vehicles, staff, buildings, et cetera. I just think that I would maybe take more of a precautionary route and look into some of the companies that we're utilizing. For example, like the new EMS station, that, as most of you know, has had issues with sinkholes. I think it's important that when we're trying to achieve having a zero emission, zero carbon footprint, that we're also making sure that we're not spending money on ground that's going to collapse after a few years of that building being built. So that's my only difference, is I would just do some more research first.
Once again, I'm an actual environmentalist. This thing is about 25 years old, and it saved, I don't know how many, tens of thousands of water bottles. Rob seemed to carry this thing up on the trail for years now. The honest truth is, the county can, the county can put solar cells on everything it's got, and can put electric vehicles and use for everyone they've got. That's not going to do much more than just put a drop in the bucket in the county. It's us, the people that live here. We have to lead by example and help them. Steph and I, my wife, our house is so efficient, our house and garage, we have two separate drops. They're both so efficient, none of the solar companies will come and put a solar system in. We're not using enough electricity for them to have any interest in it. You see us ride scooters all the time. They get over 80 miles to a gallon. We don't have a single car with over four cylinders in it. We need to increase economic activity in this county so that the people that live in this county can afford to buy more fuel-efficient vehicles, can afford to insulate their homes, can afford to switch over to efficient heat pumps and better, better sources of energy themselves. That's how we impact global warming at the county level.
If elected as county commissioner, what will you do to recruit distance workers to Athens County? And we'll go Alex, Bill, then Lenny.
Once again, we're going to have to work on economic development before we worry about bringing people into the county for work. With that being said afterwards, we're going to have to start bringing in that work. I have plans to look at industry, probably, probably some cool mining and other types of mineries here in Athens County. Again, farm work, I think we have to have all those things before we can sit down and actually discuss how we're going to bring folks into this county. To add to that, another good thing that we could do is work on the beautification of Athens County. Athens County is beautiful, but I believe that it could be more beautiful, that's the word. So I just, I think there's a lot more work that we need to focus on before we can sit down and have a conversation how to just bring those people in. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. Distance workers, actually, I was expecting to see one of my favorite distance workers here tonight. I guess you had something else to do. We have more and more of them here in Athens County, it seems like every week. We can attract a lot more. The place is beautiful, and once again, as I said in my opening statement, we now know that distance working is a reality. It works not only for the people doing it, but it works for a lot of the companies. The Fortune 500 companies could pay any of their employees that are ex-OU, you know, OU alums, probably 20 to 40% less in salary if they moved here, and they would still live vastly better. And unlike San Francisco, or Seattle, or Washington DC, they could actually afford to buy their own home and raise kids. I don't see attracting distance workers as really a difficult issue. We cross-reference OU grads with Fortune 500 companies, we talk to CFOs in those companies, we cut a deal, there'll be a program to bring them here. Now, unfortunately, we don't have the broadband capability in much of the county to make that happen, so, Steve, I hope you're paying attention, because it's mostly going to start with you, you know, but basically, anywhere where we have a broadband footprint in the county is a good candidate to bring distance workers into. Hopefully, over time, and I've got some plans for spreading broadband, we can make that possible in many other places in the county.
Continuing to approve the opportunities people have for their non-working time is an important part of the strategy. So people want to live here. I always say Southeast Ohio is the prettiest part of the state of Ohio. We have the most potential. So if we can bring distance learners, workers in, broadband is the key. We've got to make sure we have the capability to do that. We've got to make sure we have the capability to do that. One of the things Athens County Economic Development Council is focusing on is trying to build some facilities to allow that space, so we can have that. When you see, have the opportunity to come in and work, have that space available for people to have distance working if they want to have office space, or they can work from home. So those opportunities are there, we just have to continue to keep working on them.
Thank you. "Do you believe the deer population is a problem? If so, what is your solution?" We'll start with Bill, then to Lenny, then to Alex.
Okay, I'm glad you asked that one. I grew up in Megs County, Ohio, spent the better part of my teenage years with a muzzleloader in one hand and a tomahawk in the other. I grew up in the woods down there, folks. It was wonderful. The deer population is a little bit out of hand here, but it's also a tremendous economic development opportunity. Just for example, Japan, centuries-long tradition of bow hunting. They can't hunt deer there now. And we've got a university full of people here that speak both Japanese and English very, very well. We need to attract more tourists here. Eco-tourism isn't just coming here to look at the trees and ride on the Baileys. You know, we have a problem with deer, they have a solution. And there's nothing wrong with it. We've gotten rid of the wolves, we're now the apex predators. If you've studied any biology, that's the way it works, whether we like it or not. And we need to exploit that to the benefit of the people in this county to the best of our abilities.
Lenny, next.
Clearly, we have to work with ODNR to allow more harvesting of the deer. We do have a problem, but it's regulated by the state, so that situation is not something we can control, but we can also provide input into them if we can get some more to control the population, but we can't do anything at the local level to control it, something ODNR controls.
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure. "Do you believe the deer population is a problem? If so, what is your solution?"
As commissioner, I'd probably start trying to look at ways to help fund local hunter education. Having a high deer problem is a hunter problem, and just in my generation alone, the hunting thing has kind of died off. Right now, I don't know of any other, any program, county program, that's slated to help that side of the population in Athens. I'm sure there's plenty of boys out in Trimble, Fed Hawk, and other areas that would love to have their hunter education, so I think that's where I'd start first. Thank you.
Next question, "Do you think the Bailey's Trail system is a net benefit to our county or a net drain on local resources, and why?" This is for Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
It's definitely a net benefit. We've had a small investment of local resources that has been matched 100-fold by the state to continue to build the trails out. When you build the trails out, and we look at building the visitor's center and the other trailheads around the system itself, we're going to bring a lot more people in that will spend more money and provide more income, and then provide businesses, places they can go and seek out business, spend more time buying property. We've already heard of some people that have invested in properties in Chancy, just to, for their trips, they don't have to stay in a hotel. So they bought a property and they're using it for their friends to come down every weekend and ride the trail system. So when you see those kind of economic opportunities happening, that's a big investment and a big asset.
I think the Bailey's Trail system is a great thing, and if elected, I'd continue on the work there also. But I'd also like to explore other options too. In this county, we have a large community of ATV riders and dirt bike riders who I think are kind of left out of the equation a lot. You know, I took time to visit New Straitsville in Hocken County, and I talked to some of the residents there and some of the officials there, and they said that ever since they allowed their town to become ATV-friendly, the local business has boomed. Now obviously, I don't believe we can do that countywide, but as a county, we could step in and help folks who do want to create those types of other platforms for tourism, for not only the folks who live in Athens County that want that, but also the outside tourism that Hocken County likes to bring in a lot. Thank you.
The Bailey's is most definitely working. I was up there, this was middle of last February, cutting briers, I think it was on Coltrane with Tom Bennett. Six Austrians, three couples come riding by. The trail's closed, but they'd come to OU for something, and you know, they're from Austria. They came up and they rode, and that was probably the best time they had had in Athens, and they were really, big smiles, love it. Every time I'm up there, I see people from all over the country and increasingly from other countries coming here. Now, it's a great example of how we can work together with state and federal entities to leverage our hard work and sweat effort and a little bit of money into bringing a great deal more investment here to improve the economic situation of our county. And that is what I see as the challenge, how to spread that wealth amongst the people in the county. I've dug into Ohio Revised Code, I'm a big proponent of the campsite option for people as opposed to the campground option. Most people can't afford the campground option in this county, and most of them can't afford to do an Airbnb, but they can afford to put four campsites on their property, and the state will let them do it, and the requirements are very, very minimal, and those out-of-towners can come here, stay on their campsites, and pay their property taxes for them.
Thank you. "What do you believe to be the number-one county economic opportunity, and what have you done or will you do to promote it?" And this is going to Alex, then Bill, then Lenny.
Well, I haven't created any yet, but I would really like to work on farmland, nature preserves, and just, just the plain beautification of Athens County for all residents and all visitors to come to enjoy. And I think that there's just, there's just a lot of opportunity for growth in that, in that area. Thank you.
Okay, well, once again, either Rob or I are the top volunteers on the Bailey. We spent a lot of time working up there, you know, so I'm not a county commissioner yet, that's, that's all I can do is go up there and put in hours, hundreds of hours a year, actually, of sweat and blood to work on that. But in my opening statement, I listed a lot of other opportunities that we could pursue for economic development. And quite honestly, they're all very doable, they're very practical, they tie into national and state needs, and they address real problems that we have the opportunity to solve with a little bit of outside help and investment. And unlike many other places in the country, certainly Columbus, Columbus can't put aquaponics greenhouses all over the place, they've got people living everywhere up there. We can, and we can supply them with the food they need, and in turn, they'll give us their dollars. Quaidel sends their, all their plasticware out to have it ethylene oxide sterilized. We can get a small ethylene oxide facility in this county with a little blow motor and a little injection motor. And remember five years ago when the hurricane went through Puerto Rico, and you couldn't get an elective surgery done for the entire summer here? That was because the one factory that was producing sterile saline bags got shut down. We can bring that here to support the effort and make that, it's kind of like an issue of national security. We don't have the trade system we used to have, it's not robust, we need to strengthen
Diversifying our local economy along, without destroying our natural resources and beauty is the thing that we have to do. When we look at developing various things, we want to make sure that we continue to take advantage of the area that we have and keep that recreation economy growing, because that's going to provide a lot of jobs for people and moving us forward. But we don't want to destroy our natural beauty, because that's the thing that brings people here. So we have to look for the balance between the two as we go for future growth.
Thank you. Please demonstrate how you would consider it, please demonstrate how you would consider in your policy decisions the unique challenges that low-income individuals and families face in Athens County. How would you advocate for and promote those policies? And first, it'll be Bill, then Lenny, then Alex.
Boy, I hate to keep banging this drum. We need to provide more jobs with higher income opportunity. Look, the land bank, everyone talks about the land bank and how it's taking care of all these abandoned properties. We need to step back and ask the question, why are these properties being abandoned? And it's because the low-income people here can't find jobs. We need to create more opportunities for them. Many of the things I've listed here, and a lot more, offer the opportunity to give these people the kind of income, employment opportunity and the income that comes from that, so that they can stay here. We can't, as a county, we can't, you know, go out and tell the landlords, you know, we can't freeze rent or anything like that, we don't have that ability. All we can do is try to improve the economy to the extent that they can survive in the economy here. That is unfortunately the best we can do.
Attracting jobs that pay living wages is really the key. One of the things that we looked at over the course of time is what it takes to raise a family in the county, and you have to make sure that you're paying those wages. So when we look at potential tax incentives for new businesses, that standard gets higher and higher each year. So they have to be able to make sure that they're paying wages and providing benefits to those employees that they have, so that they can achieve the living wage conditions that they have to provide for a family. So we've made the commitment at our own office, we've raised all of our employees up to what we consider a minimum living wage standard, and continue to work towards keeping that growing. So we found out at one point we were paying below that standard, and it was kind of embarrassing when you're having people come in and you expect them to do better than you're doing. So we want to make sure we set an example, which we started doing. So we continue to work so that people can have a place, afford a place, and enjoy a
I can sum my answer up pretty, pretty quickly. The way that I want to approach that situation is, I want to create the goals, I want to create goals for the county so high that we're going to put a Walmart on Greens Run in Trimble Township. Those are the goals that I'm looking at. I want to take this county as far as we can go. Thank you.
"What are your feelings on the Athens County Land Bank, and what will your participation to the land bank be like?" And it's Lenny, Alex, Bill.
Well, the land bank's done a lot of good things since it came into existence. We've taken down some houses that have been trouble spots around the county. We've also started rehabbing some houses, we've sold properties to be rehabbed, so the land bank has done greater expectations than I ever had. It's really done a great job. One of the things, though, that we have a problem with in this county is abandoned mobile homes. And so one of the things we're going to look for in the future is trying to get the land banks around the state to lobby the state, to get those of us that have a lot of mobile homes some more money, and provide some pockets of money to help us take care of those abandoned mobile homes, because those are much a problem as you find inside the condensed city areas and village areas where you have rundown properties. I think the land bank will continue to grow for the next several years, but the idea of the land bank is you really want it to go out of business. You want to have it taken care of so that all your housing stock is great, all the people are operating the way they should be, and paying their taxes and not be tax delinquent. Because remember, the land bank can only go after tax-delinquent abandoned properties, so it just can't go out and take a property that somebody that's paying their taxes for. So if our economy is growing and we have people with jobs, so they'll be able to pay their taxes, then you won't have that problem anymore. So eventually, we'd like to see the land bank actually almost go out of business.
So I think I'm going to have to agree with Lenny on this one. I appreciate the work that the land bank has done, I've seen it improve it myself with just being a Nelsonville resident. There are a lot of rundown properties and trailers in this area, I mean, you can't dispute the fact, or that fact. So I would continue working with the Athens County Land Bank as it is now. I agree that there are some things that might need tweaked or worked on, but there's room for improvement everywhere. Thank you.
Look, I'm glad we have the land bank, but it's a Band-Aid on a pretty serious wound. We, once again, need to get to the situation where we don't have the need for the land bank. The best day of that land bank will be the day we no longer operate it. Between now and then, once again, it comes back to economic development and spreading that economic development, not only geographically across the county, but we have to look at low-to-medium-income jobs as a big priority in the short term. Most of the people, okay, Chancy, Gloucester, Bookton, Coolville, all around, they don't have the desire to work behind a desk, they don't have the desire to work in high-tech, they just want a job. Well, we've got to find ways to give them jobs that pay enough that they can afford to stay on their properties, pay their taxes, and not end up with their houses in foreclosure for lack of paying taxes.
Thank you. "What role, if any, do the county commissioners have in property tax rates?" Alex, then Bill, then Lenny.
So from my understanding, the way it's written right now is, the burden of taxing kind of falls on a couple different officials. Of course, I would be a fan of lowering the tax rate right now. When we were door-knocking, that was probably the first thing that people complained about was how high their property taxes were, that my property taxes raised. So that's a very, very crucial concern right now among people in this county is their property taxes. And I'm going to be a fighter for any chance to lower the taxes. Thank you.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, I think our base property tax rate is about 34% higher than that in Megs County. Isn't that right? Okay, all right. It's somewhere in that neighborhood. I've looked it up. And you can ask anybody in the Albany area, they all know people who have moved to Megs County about a mile away because their taxes go down. Unfortunately, the state mandates what we have to do in the way of services, what we have to provide in the way of services, and the portion that we have to pay for. And we do have a major problem with the fact that we have a lot of untaxed land in the county. Ohio University, Wayne National Forest, and Hocken College, but OU's been here since 1804, the Wayne, I think, started in 1936, and Hocken College has been here since 1968. We've had a little time to work on this problem, and I don't think we've done enough work on the problem. We need to bring our taxes into a more competitive situation with the area around us. We don't have a magic wand to do that, though. It all comes back to economic activity and increased tax revenues. That's how we solve this and so many of the other problems.
The biggest role the commissioners have in tax rates is the inside millage. We can actually enact up to 10 mills. We've only enacted three, so we haven't enacted any more. When it comes to the rest of the taxes, that's all by a vote of the people. So when you have anything outside the 10-mill limitation, that has to be voted on, so the majority of the citizens in the area that's being taxed are the ones that vote on it. So they're the ones that play the role. But when you look at the different programs that are out there, like for senior citizens, for TB levy, for Beacon School, children's services, so you talk about all the services, and of course, the schools, which get the majority of the money for property tax. So if you want to reform the property tax system, you have to actually get the legislature to come into compliance with the Supreme Court ruling that Ohio schools are unconstitutionally funded, and come up with a constitutional way of funding the schools as opposed to putting it on the back of the local taxpayer, which is what we do now. So when you look at your tax bill, you'll see the breakdown on the back of it where everyone gets and what percentage goes where to each entity. So when you realize how much money actually goes to schools versus the local government, we're not the ones with the big tax burden, it's how you fund the schools.
Thank you. "As communities across the nation, including Athens County, experience an aging population, what do you see as the county's responsibility to help create a safe and attractive environment to keep this population here?" First, Bill, then Lenny, then Alex.
So let me see if I've got your question right, to keep the aging population here or the younger people here?
To, how to keep the aging population, let's see, what do you see as the county's responsibility to help create a safe and attractive environment to keep the aging population here?
Okay, that comes down basically to good infrastructure and services that the county can provide, but that's only a limited extent of the needs that they have. The vast majority of the needs that you would have as an individual fall outside of the county's purview. As far as the people that live here... As far as the people that live here, we need to increase their income across their lifespan so that they're better prepared for retirement. Beyond that, we really have our hands kind of tied. We can't do direct funding where we don't have anything to do with their retirement, basically. But we can provide decent services and work with the entities in the county that want to do that and try to make sure that they coordinate and do the best job they can and that we help them get all the resources that we can possibly give them. But, well, as Lenny pointed out, we've got a pretty small pot to work with, and the money's not there to increase it significantly.
Lenny, next, Alex.
One of the boards I sit on is called the Buckeye Hills Support Services, and we're doing our first senior project in Washington County right now. Buckeye Hills is a regional council that serves eight counties in southeast Ohio. And what we're doing is working with the Marietta, Washington County Commissioners and the city of Marietta, a property they own, to redevelop that property into affordable senior housing. So that's the first project we have underway. Construction is underway, and so we hopefully have that will be occupied and then start in other counties around the region for the regional council, Athens being the next target on the potential places to build. The other thing that we're doing is the potential for the Community Development Authority, that one of the focuses is for senior housing. So as far as Buckeye Hills Support Services, not only will it be in housing, but it'll have wraparound services for seniors. So you have a chance to do all the things they need to get to. So when you look at that, those are the things we can do, and we continue to work with those relationships and continue to try to move those forward.
So our aging populace of this county is very, very crucial to our success. It's because of them we have what we have today. They're the ones that have worked and have built a home here and has turned Athens County into their own land. So I think it's important that we are supporting these folks the best way we can. And I would actually be interested in exploring the option of cutting that tax in any way possible, at least from the county level, for anyone who's over the age of 65 or retired. We're not going to, we're not going to be able to support our aging community until we work on our infrastructure and our jobs area in this county. That way, we have those two key factors to support the aging community. So, thank you.
What measures do you support to address the drug abuse problem in Athens County? Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. What measures do you support to address the drug abuse problem in Athens County? The drug abuse problem.
That's a complicated issue. When you talk about the ability to look at the different programs we have with diversion and get to, jobs is really the key. I talk about this with my wife a lot. We said if we get people jobs and get them to work, and they work a full day and they work hard, they go home, they're too tired to play and do those things that they, when they don't have a job and they have too much time on their hand, they get involved in the wrong things. So that's one of the things we can do with a job, for people to make sure that they have a place to work and income to support themselves, and then the services that are available to help get them, those that have problems with it, get them off the problem and get them to being productive citizens again.
Alex, next.
See, I agree with Lenny. This is a very challenging issue, and it's just not in our county or even our state. It's all over. The way I sit down and look at this is, I think the great first step, or first step in helping would be to work with the auditor to extend the jail. And I don't say that to create a punish scenario, but more or less so these folks have an actual safe place to be staying while they're waiting on receiving this help. I also think that we need to look into building, we need to build more rehabs and more centers here in Athens County and make sure that these folks have every, you know, every opportunity or any, or every opportunity available to them, is what I was trying to say. I don't think that, I have to disagree, I don't think people get on drugs because they're bored. I think people get on drugs because there's no work here. And, you know, when we don't have work here, our community is destabilizing, and I think it just kind of falls downhill from there. I believe that if we had meaningful jobs in this county, that our drug problem would deteriorate. Thank you.
I think the last trash pickup that I worked on up along the Baileys was Utah Ridge Road and New Flubwood Road, and that was with a group in one of the Sheriff's diversion programs. So obviously, I'm directly involved in what we're doing now, you know, to support getting people not going to jail, they could cuss a minor in fraction, possession, whatever. We send them out to do something other than cost the taxpayers money and take up space in the jail. That's one small step in the right direction, but it doesn't solve the problem. The basic problem, and, you know, background biology coming into play here, if you look at animal behavior, and we are animals, if you have a good environment and you're happy and your needs are being met, you have much less of a desire to escape from that reality. Unfortunately, the only thing we can do here in the county, at the county level, is economic development to try to create more opportunities for them to have a decent job and not have the desire to participate in an activity on their own time because we cannot logically control what they do on their own time, no more than we can control what you do on your own time.
How would you strengthen opportunities and support for local food-based businesses? This is Alex, then Bill, then Lenny.
Well, it sounds like we have a deer problem here in Athens County. So maybe we could definitely start by donating some meat to maybe some small businesses in this area. And just to clarify, was this a question towards small businesses or the food bank? I apologize.
Local food-based businesses.
Okay. So, I mean, even then, you know, we have a deer problem here. You know, there's some people out there that deer hunt just for fun. You know, we can have those folks, you know, deliver meat or donate the meat to those small businesses. Just the stepping stones of ways to make sure that our many great small businesses that we have in this county are flourishing and the ones that want to move in also have that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, well, food-based businesses. I've already mentioned a few, a couple of ideas there. And next to tourism, I think that's probably the brightest star we have on our horizon for developing a stronger economy around here. Everybody likes to eat three times a day. If we grow more food and we export it from the county, we will be able to import more dollars. It's that simple. And that addresses many of the other issues we've already discussed. Now, I've got actually two projects going on with AICnet right now. One I've already mentioned, the retort pouch canning facility, and they're very excited about that possibility. I've got a thousand of these eight-ounce retort bags at my house and a couple of different pressure cookers to do the experimentation with. And we're already working through the massive amount of regulatory stuff you've got to wade through to get something like this up and running. The second thing is, we need to lower the barrier, the cost barrier, to getting more people involved in perhaps at first a part-time, but eventually maybe a full-time, food-based business. I've got a little project going with that, too, and I'm really looking forward to get that going. The last thing that I want to bring up, once again, the Aquaponies Greenhouse. The world is changing. We're losing Southern California's production. 70% of the vegetables you see in the produce hall in Kroger's come from there. We need to take up that slack, and I think we can find the funding to make that opportunity possible here in Athens County.
The number-one thing to do to help those businesses is to bring more people in, and that's through the development of our economy and through bringing people into the county. We can also provide some opportunities at places for shared costs. When you look at the incubators that we have around the county, Rural Action has done a lot of work in that area. You have the different abilities for people to start a business and do those things that would get that opportunity going for them. But primarily, it's to develop the economy and keep it moving forward and getting more people in here that will actually go out and use those businesses and develop them.
What can the county commissioners do to promote the expansion of broadband in our county? First, Bill, then Lenny, then Alex.
That is a very tough one, but an incredibly crucial one. Well, I'll answer this along the same lines as I did in the written response to that question. If the technology existed to put broadband in a rural hilly area, sparsely populated area like ours, was already here, we'd already have it. The fact of the matter is, it's not here yet. The technology fortunately is rapidly advancing. About the best we can hope to do in the meantime, and there are tremendous, the USDA has 20 different funding programs alone for broadband in rural areas. There's a ton of money out there that we can access. But initially, right now, the technology to bring affordable broadband to everyone in the county simply isn't here yet. Cross your fingers, hope 5G is a big step in the right direction. But, one thing that I would love to do, and I'm sure we can find the funding to do it, is to put large, high-powered routers, the type they use at truck stop parking lots, on all the schools and all the libraries in the county so that the people, and I'm thinking mostly of the people who can't afford broadband access, like all of us here can, give them the opportunity to at least get their kids the ability to do their homework, do their business online, things like that, and hope that that will tide us over until the time that we can have more affordable broadband available here in the county.
The first thing we're doing is working with the Amesville area to bring broadband there, improve their broadband situation for the village and the area outside that. One of the things you have to realize with broadband is the FCC did what's known as the ARDOF auction. So a lot of the areas are tied up in that auction, and they belong to Spectrum. And Spectrum has a number of years to build out those areas. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with a Spectrum manager in this area. He happened to be at an event I was at, and we arranged to meet and discuss how they're doing. And the way they're approaching it is, they expect to have those areas built out in the next two years, which is something the state of Ohio put in as a limit for them to get monies from the state as part of this process. So we can provide match money to the willing providers that want to go out and expand in those areas, and that's something we did with our ARPA money so that we could do the Amesville project. We also did a study of the county, and we had identified the areas where it's most likely that we could find willing providers to expand the areas, to improve the broadband in the county, and that's something we're using to go out and try to attract other providers to come in, in the areas that were able to do it because we're restricted by the FCC auction. So that's one of the things we have to work within, is the parameters the FCC has established. But if Charter does what they're supposed to do, you will see a huge increase in the next two years in broadband in the county.
So I was really curious on this topic. So I decided to meet with Washington County Commissioners, probably about a month ago. And one of the biggest things that came up in our meeting is, you know, how are you guys doing with broadband? And they pretty much jumped, or piled the dump truck on me and told me that there is a NTA broadband grant right now going on through the Buckeye Hills Regional Council Broadband Committee. And with that, so far, they have been able to see, or they were able to receive a lot of money in broadband, and they are actually almost leading the way right now in our lower region when it comes to broadband services. I'm going to look at this and work hard on this topic because, once again, you know, our kids that live in the sticks, as I'll call it, because I live there, too, aren't getting the same, or doesn't, they don't have the same advantage as the kids who live in an area where you are getting good service. So I think the county is losing out on a lot of potential. You know, our county could be producing some amazing, amazing individuals, not that they already don't, but I think that level of production could be higher if a child out in Gloucester or Coolville had access to a computer. So, thank you.
Okay, there's a lot of questions in this next one. What are your spending priorities? If new resources were available, what one area of county services would you feel most needs additional resources? Should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? If so, which area? And we'll hear from Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
We have very little excess money to be able to take on a program like that. Our needs at the county level, we have to balance our budget every year, and it's a struggle at times to make sure we're giving the office holders the money they need to do their statutory duties. So we don't have a lot of opportunity to say, we've got a little war chest, except in this case with the ARPA money where we have a one-time infusion of some money, and we're spreading that around the county into a number of areas that are looking for different projects that they want to do to improve their community. But if I had money that I would do, I would invest it in as many recreational opportunities that we could because I see that as the future for us to continue to grow and bring new people into the county, expose people to the county. I came here as a student a number of years ago and fell in love with it. I grew up in the city of Cleveland, but when I came to southeast Ohio, I found that it was a very special place. When I graduated, I couldn't find a job, so I moved away, and I wanted to come back and raise my family. It took us a few years to do that, but we came back and raised our family here, and we decided that this is the place we wanted to put down our roots and try to make that opportunity available for other people.
So it's no secret that we're scratching the bottom of the coffee can. I think it'd be important, especially when it comes to spending, if we had to do cutbacks, the very first thing that I would prioritize is protecting our first responders, EMS, law enforcement, et cetera. So those are things that I would prioritize if we had to cut spending. But once again, I think this question covers a couple of the other ones that we already answered, is we have to work on jobs and economic development in this county. If we don't, then we're never going to produce anything to get us out of the financial mess that we're in. So, like I said, I think it's crucial, again, to hit on the topics of economic development and jobs.
Well, I've already hammered this issue to death, pretty much, but the fact of the matter is, we don't have the money to, you know, address many issues beyond what we're doing right now. If you give us a magic bottomless credit card, then yes, you know, we can do a lot of things in the way of trying to improve broadband access around the county and bring more jobs to this county. But beyond that, we're going to have to go digging and scraping to a lot of the federal entities out there to get the funding we need to go over the projects that I've already laid out, to do the job development that's absolutely essential if we're going to survive as a county and keep any kind of population base here. And that's really what I would focus on, I think, if I had any extra funding at all, it would go into development.
Please, please describe one specific plan of yours to improve the lives of people in Athens County. Alex, then Bill, then Lenny.
Jobs.
Well, I can use a few more words, but that's basically it. Seriously, I wish I could take you out to some of the villages and have you sit down and talk to the residents there. Sitting here in Athens, we don't realize how well-off we are. Around the county, it's just not that way. And we desperately need to improve their ability to afford to live here, you know, and that's the bottom line. I wish I could state it in some more eloquent way, but that's it.
We just have to continue to work towards improving the lives of the community that we serve, do the job that we're elected to do, and continue to reach out and build relationships with other people that will bring jobs in. When you look at what we do, no commissioner can do anything by themselves. You're running to be a member of a board, so you're sitting on the board and it takes two to tango. No matter what great ideas you have... tango. No matter what great ideas you have or what you want to do, if someone else doesn't agree with you, it's not gonna get done. Ideally, you want all three to agree to something, uh, but we don't always agree. We disagree on things, uh, but we have to get to a compromise or get to a solution where it's two to one, and you move on. Uh, but when you think about if we all agreed on everything all the time, you wouldn't need two of us. You'd only have one person. But the way our board is structured, there's three people, we have three different ideas, we come to the best conclusion we can with the information we have and things that we move forward with.
Um, Zach and Jack, did you want to answer, or did you want to ask any questions tonight?
Uh, the question that I had for you gentlemen was, how do you think you can get the student population of Ohio University best involved with helping out the Athens community? Where do you think our place is in all of this?
And we'll start with Bill, then Lenny, then Alex.
Okay, uh, great. Actually, I personally have recruited a number of Ohio University students to come up and work on the Baileys and actually even got uh one of the local students a uh an internship uh with uh Dwayne. Well, uh, that was uh this summer, this past summer. Um, but there are a lot of opportunities, volunteer opportunities, that the students here could take uh advantage of. One thing I want to bring out, and I'm glad you've given me this opportunity, I just realized this the other day, we have a new pump track at Chancy, at the trailhead there. The bicycle club, we rehabilitate donated bicycles and hand them out to kids all around the county. We are desperately in need of BMX bikes. So if any of the students at Ohio University have some BMX bikes sitting in their garage collecting dust, get in touch. We can put that under the some kid in Chancy or Donville or someplace like that and make them very, very happy, and it would be a wonderful thing for you to do.
Uh, internships, donations, volunteering, uh, projects, uh, any club can do a project. Uh, it's a matter of getting uh away from Court Street and getting involved in the community. Uh, it's important to experience the whole community and embrace the community. I think you find over the years when you deal with the student community of the university, uh, the more they're involved in the area, the more they like it. Uh, you don't want to be isolated in one spot and just stay inside the cocoon of the university. You want to embrace the area that you live in. Uh, so there's lots of opportunities out there, uh, contacting us, so you know, we can, any group you have, uh, we can direct you to places to go. There are plenty of volunteer opportunities.
I agree with both, and th- thank you for asking that question. It's a good one. Um, i- it's been a challenge going door-to-door and talking to kids my age about voting. Um, they sadly, a lot of them don't know what a commissioner is, so we uh we take time to explain that to them, and we've we've had good feedback. So I'd like to think that I'll I'll be a good staple for your guys' age gr- or our age group. Um, and I'd have to agree with Lenny, I I think some uh county-level internships uh would be a great start to get you guys involved. Um, anything to get you guys off Court Street. Um, so I I think there there's a lot of room there for you guys. Uh, I think there's a lot of room, potential for you guys to be involved in the community. Um, I know that Nelson York Athletic Boosters, they struggle on Football Friday night. Uh, all all schools do, but I know that that to just be one example, they struggle on the weekends or on Friday for football and other sports to get people to to show up and and work the the food booths or, you know, take money from the gate. I- it's a struggle, and and I think that if you guys utilize your times with the local high schools and, you know, local schools and in your community, you guys are gonna form a really close bond uh to the community members in Athens County. Thank you.
Okay. Um, which three of the many responsibilities of a commissioner do you plan to focus on if elected? And it's Lenny, then Alex, then Bill.
Can you repeat that?
Yes. Which three of the many responsibilities of a commissioner do you plan to focus on if elected?
The first is finances. That's the most important, uh, because without money, you can't do anything else. You have to make sure that you balance the budget. Uh, the second is the improvement of the uh conditions of our physical plant. Uh, we have a lot of old buildings. We have to make sure that they are uh continuing to serve the purpose they have and as are upgraded and safe as they can be. Uh, we're going through some renovations right now uh to improve the heating and air conditioning plant of our courthouse complex, as we call it, the sheriff's building, the courthouse, and the administration building. Uh, and the third is to do anything that we can do uh to invest in economic development opportunities for the county.
Uh, Alex, next.
Uh, so I'm gonna start with uh job creation. Um, once again, that that's that's my strong topic. Uh, I want a lot of focus towards that. Um, my second one's gonna be tourism um and economic development. Um, I uh, everything that, um, e- every topic that I analyze, I have the thought process of, will this make a a better quality of life for Athens County residents, current and future? Um, so um, with that being said, I I I think I I would generalize my three tops is um, uh, jobs, economic development, and uh farm and nature, or agriculture. Thank you.
Well, I think I already stated this about five times, but the primary uh responsibility that I would pursue as econ- as a county commissioner is economic development. Uh, I can expand on that a little bit by saying that I would like to work hard to secure external funding to assist us in that with some very targeted and very logical and very doable projects. Uh, the second thing uh would be to uh help protect our environment. Uh, we have to maintain our uniqueness here. Uh, if we if we homogenize ourselves like the rest of America, then America has no reason to come here and spend their money. So we've got to keep Athens Athens. That is a very high, high priority. And the third thing, I think we could probably do a better job uh looking at our long-term maintenance of infrastructure and trying to combine as many projects as we can to make the absolute best use of the pennies, basically, that we have to do that sort of thing with.
Thanks. This will be the last question before closing statements. What is your vision for the future of Athens County? First Alex, then Bill, then Lenny.
So I'll just go out and say, obviously, I don't have the experience as these two gentlemen here. Um, but what I do have that I I think that uh makes me a better candidate is the fact that I come from the people. I I I listen to the people. Uh, I spend time with them. Um, I I toured every single um school in this county. When I started running, we we door knocked, we got out there, and and the biggest thing that people um said was, you know, I want my road fixed, or I want a better job, or I want a job. Um, so th- those are gonna be the 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 crucial points that that I focus on um as a county commissioner.
Okay, uh, number one, I want to see the economic development activities spread more broadly across the county to raise the standard of living across the county. Uh, obviously, I want to see tourism continue to increase. I think we have a lot of untapped potential there. I think that uh we can do a lot with bringing more distance workers here, and I've already mentioned how I'd probably go about that. Uh, I want to see more small-scale niche market manufacturing and order fulfillment here. Stor- McDonald Guitar Supply Company, one of the largest and oldest private businesses we have in this county, I think they started in 1968, has shown us that we can, if we combine the resources we have with the passions of our people, we can conquer a global market. They're number one in the world right now. They're like, they're like the poster child for what we need to do. Quaidell's done a great job, too. There are so many good examples that we have to look to uh as to what we can emulate and try to achieve in this county.
When you look back at Athens in in 20 years and you say what your vision was for it, I hope that in 20 years, we say Athens was a vi- is a vibrant, thriving community that's diversified in its economy and continuing to grow without losing its natural beauty.
Okay, we'll now move to closing statements. Each of you will have two minutes for your final remarks. Um, following in the order we've been going this evening, um, Bill Hayes will go first.
Okay, remember, folks, uh, we have elections with the frequency we do for some very important reasons, not the least of which is to bring new ideas and approaches into play when business as usual isn't getting the job done. Twenty years ago, Athens was one of the poorest counties in the state, and today, we still are. And I don't see any good reason for that. We're rich in resources and uh people that desperately want jobs and want to work. I think that it's time to leave this sort of company town mentality that has gripped us for so long in the past and uh move towards a more prosperous future. The world's changing rapidly, and with that comes challenges and opportunity. Now, it won't be easy or quick, and it won't require a lot of fundraising, but with determination and perseverance and a little brass, we can bring a strong, diverse, resilient economy to all of Athens County. Uh, Quaidell, formerly Diagnostic Hybrids, Stur- McDonald's, uh, our farmer's market, the many food-based businesses that ACENet has helped to foster, our breweries and other businesses have proven that we can get the job done here in Athens County. We just need to do a lot more of it, and going forward, we need to set our sights higher, bigger businesses, a bigger part of the economy, outfits like Dumac that export not only to the rest of the country but to the world, and we've proven we can do that here. We just need to do a lot more of it. Uh, to borrow loosely from the world of baseball, it's bottom of the ninth, we're up to bat, bases are loaded, but we're down by three. It's time to swing for the fences, and uh, I hope you put me up to bat.
Okay. Next, a closing statement from Lenny Eliason.
I have a deep commitment to making my community a better place to live, work, and play. That's why I'm running for reelection. When I was in private business, I served as Chamber of Commerce President and found out that it was important to get a seat at the table to make sure I improved the community, which led me to run for office. My family has a history of public service. My wife was a special education teacher before going to law school and becoming a prosecutor. My daughter is a music education teacher. My son is a major in the Air Force, a fighter pilot serving our country. We believe that you work for your family and you work for your community. I want to thank the League for hosting this event. Thank you all for attending and tuning in. My experience as a manager, a business owner, an elected official, provides me with the unique insight and understanding to do this job. When it comes to having the respect of my peers, the experience and dedication to position at county commissioner, there is only one choice in this election. I would appreciate your vote in this year's election, and remember that proven experience serves you best.
Thank you. And finally, Alex Burcher, it's your turn for a closing statement.
Uh, in closing, uh, I wish for your support as a county commissioner because I want to bring a seat, or I I want there to be a seat at the table for all Athens Countyans. Um, and I I want to, I want to be the person that's out there every day, uh, door-to-door if I have to, roundtable, wh- whatever we have to do, uh, bringing these folks in from the outer parts of the county, sitting down and discussing what their issues are and how we as a, as a county commission can can help them get through those. Um, so in closing, um, I would ask for uh your your support in November, um, and uh making sure that we stay for the people, by the people. Thank you.
I'd like to close this forum by thanking all the candidates for their participation in our democratic process. I would also like to extend our thanks to the City of Athens Government Channel and Ryan Schwartzoff for recording this event. This recording will be viewable on the City of Athens YouTube channel and its Facebook page, the League of Women Voters of Athens County Facebook page, and will be replayed on the Government Channel, Channel 1024. And finally, I want to thank the people of Athens County for submitting so many thoughtful questions and for joining us to learn more about these candidates. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Check your voter registration at voteohio.gov to make sure it is up to date. Early in-person voting begins October 12th, and Election Day is November 8th. Thank you all, and have a good night.